Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 16, 2020 city council meeting. I'd ask that this evening you join me in our moment of silent reflection, remembering the many years of service, decades of service, to our Buchanan Fire Department for the late Larry Mackey who we lost last week. Larry was our fire chief for 17 years after Bud Bennett and before Mitch Tacey. The fire guys, at least the old guard would tell you, "To a man," that there was never a more committed firefighter to our community than Larry Mackey. In addition to his decades of serving as a firefighter, Larry was also a decorated Vietnam War veteran. Some of his feats are legendary, and you can access those on the Internet and read all about his gallantry and heroism. But let's keep the Larry Mackey family in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers this evening. Thank you very much. And Mr. Alan Nash, our man of the night this evening, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge to the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So since we've already got him up once, we'll ask him to come up and join me up front. Would Mr. Nash please join me up front and center? Thank you for being here again. Come on over. All right. You know a little bit. Callie is still on the thunder. Already tipped you off as to what this is about. Whereas the Council of the City of Buchanan resolved during its regular meeting of October 18, 2018, to honor residents of our Buchanan Upsher community who perform extraordinary service while embracing the kind and giving spirit of volunteerism. And whereas Buchanan has long championed community service and has recognized persons who have given selflessly for the benefit of our city's fire department, Stocker Youth and Community Center, and police department, but had not until recently formally recognized others who generally perform many other acts of service and kindness. And whereas with the 2018 establishment of our Buchanan Volunteer Center, the city deemed it to be reasonable and appropriate to recognize our community's most giving volunteers with previous honorees of the Buchanan exemplary service testimonial, that's the Best Award, being Amanda Hayes, Zachary Musler, Robin Keough, Shirley Tinney, Bill Nicholson, Dr. Joseph Reed, Dr. Paul Richter, April Keating, Brad and Kim Linsicum, Dr. Kathy Gregg, Stan Rexrood, Rich Clemmons, Buchanan helps log 1736, Miles Paw, and Craig Buchanan. Now therefore, I as mayor of the City of Buchanan, pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim as our city's 16th recipient of our Buchanan exemplary service testimonial, the Best Award, for January of 2020, to be Alan Nash. Mr. Nash moved to Buchanan in 1996 and served as a youth basketball and soccer coach and referee. He then served as a high school soccer and lacrosse referee for nine years. Retiring in 2015 from his job as a federal employee after 32 years, Alan Nash became a volunteer for the American Red Cross. More recently, Mr. Nash began volunteering for the Upsher County Public Library. He is a regular contributor to the maintenance of our Buchanan Nature Park and Learning Trail. Alan Nash leads the league in hours volunteered in our BU community, according to our Buchanan Volunteer Center data. Simply stated, Alan Nash has helped us all in our BU community to be better and happier in many ways. His service has heightened our quality of life. I direct that a permanent flagrant be placed upon our city's Best Bench in Jawbone Park to forever honor and recognize Alan Nash and all past and future honorees of our city's Best Award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guest, Alan Nash, his family, friends, admirers, including me, along with all members of our city government family, during our public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 PM on Thursday, January 16, 2020, as we honor our city's 16th recipient of our Best Award. We all wish Mr. Nash the very best as he continues to work hard for our BU community. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including the 16th recipient of our city's Best Award, Mr. Alan Nash, given under my hand, and right there it is, the official seal of the City of Buchanan, this 16th day of January. Wonderful. Let me thank you. Thank you. And now, all these... There will be wanting to...
Stop it, Alan, against the law.
Get the photo up. Are we going to Amanda first?
Go ahead.
Amanda?
Seniority.
Oh, senior.
I think Katie might be...
Keep digging.
Senior photographer, is what I'm...
One, two, three.
Brad, you're on the freshman group.
All right, it's been one for flash. One, two, three. And one, two. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. We appreciate all you did. Congratulations. Keep it up. Congratulations.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have some other guests. Laura Meadows, the Executive Director of the Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau, is I think here to give us her quarterly report. Laura, how are those Meadows boys doing?
Uh, you know. Just leave it at that. I know you have these in your packets, but I wanted you to have the colored version because they're prettier.
Aww.
Yeah, so this is our, the Convention and Visitors Bureau's quarterly report that covers October through December of 2019. And we just wanted to give updates of what we've been doing and a few updates of what we have planned for this new year. So I'll just kind of jump into it. If anybody has questions while I'm talking, shout them out. I always like to start with just stressing what our role is, and that's to reach an outside population, to let them know what we have here in Buchanan and Upsher County, and get them to visit our community. So people don't always necessarily see what we do in Buchanan because we're not promoting Buchanan to people living in Buchanan. We're reaching places like Pittsburgh, Columbus, DC area, across the border into Virginia, and then of course throughout the state too. But we really do try to reach that visitor population and let them know what we already know that Buchanan's a great place. One of the ways that we collaborate with community members and community organizations is really just being open to any idea or suggestion. So we're always willing to work with people, we'll find ways to support them. And I listed just an overview of what we were able to, or who we were able to collaborate with through this past quarter. The West Virginia Community Development Hub, I think everybody heard of their conference that they held here in Buchanan, and it was a great turnout, which was awesome to see that many people in downtown Buchanan, to find parking. I mean, we had 200 people attend this conference. Everybody was able to find sufficient parking, walk maybe a block, come downtown, and of course go through this conference, which the conference itself was really amazing. But the other part of it that was really just phenomenal was how much they featured Buchanan. And the Community Development Hub really uses Buchanan as their poster child. And they're taking our successes across the state, and they're telling people what we're doing right in our community and how we're all working together. And you know, it's just helping expand Buchanan's message, and it's helping other towns grow what they're trying to do as well. But we worked with the hub as they came in, helped them, you know, just prepare and plan and, you know, just welcome them into Buchanan. We collaborated with the West Virginia Civil War Trails Program. If you remember back whenever West Virginia was turning 150, it was a really big ordeal. There was a lot of promotion about it, a lot of celebration. And one of the pieces that came out of that was, and it's a multi-state program, but it's a map that shows where all the Civil War locations are throughout West Virginia, Tennessee, Virginia, Pennsylvania. The other states have continued to produce that map. West Virginia's kind of fell off the bandwagon. But everybody's been collaborating, and the state tourism office has been really kind of gearing it back up. So we've been collaborating with them to get that piece reprinted and reproduced and redistributed. So that's coming up in the next year, and we're happy about that. We always work with Wesleyan. We do a lot of holiday events. We host a Christmas scavenger hunt from our office. It's a great way for elementary school students and their families to visit local businesses and local Christmas-related events. And it's free, it's fun, and it's always a great turnout. We always work with the Upsher Arts Alliance to do their tree and wreath auction. They decorate our office, and people are coming in and out. It's always just a great festive time. And to also see what we were able to do this past quarter was produce an Audra State Park rack card. The state has stopped producing individual state park rack cards, so we got tired of people asking for Audra stuff and the state not being able to fulfill that. So we worked with the superintendent at Audra and printed 15,000 of these, so we can now add that to our distribution and get them out and let people know details about Audra.
So then, across the state, is that what's going on? It's up to local CDVs to kind of take in the attractions, the state parks that are closest to them?
Yeah, I probably wouldn't have been the first one to pull the gun, but I saw that Marion County produced their own for Valley Falls, and I figured if they could do it, we could too. But yeah, I mean, they do have one printed piece, and it's kind of a larger pamphlet, and it just kind of is an all-encompassing state park guide, but they don't have the individual pieces. But this has been a huge request, so we're happy to finally have it done in the hands of people. And I'm not going to go over numbers, but our quarterly reach and impact, you can see we just rely on a variety of marketing channels. We rely on social media, whether it's paid or just the free posts that we can do and engage with our followers. We always use our website. Everything's directed back to our website, so everybody can get a full picture of what our community has to offer. Online ads, traditional print ads, and then we have our e-newsletter. I mean, they're not specific numbers, but you can see a general reach of what we were able to have in this past quarter. And it fluctuates, you know, sometimes we have more print ads, more online ads. It just kind of depends on what promotion's happening that season. Moving on to the event center. We operate the event center, and every single time I think about the event center, there's something new that pops up with it, but it really is fun. And this is just a quick snapshot of where we are at the end of December. For the quarter, our total revenue was just a little over 17,000, which is absolutely amazing. This quarter, we had multiple back-to-back events, where we would have an event Friday night. Our crew would go in, they would stay throughout the night, they'd flip the room, they'd clean the room and have it ready for people to come in Saturday morning to start prepping for a Saturday night event. And that happened often this past quarter. So if, I mean, the demand was great, we were able to keep up with everything, and that's awesome. And year-to-date, from July through the end of December, we had a total of 37 events. So every single time we look at the numbers, it grows. So we're happy with it. And just again, a quick little overview, we had the Shriners come back to Upsher County in October, and their event was successful, and we were really happy to have them back in our community. And they were happy with the outcome, so they are going to continue to stay here in Upsher County with us. They're going to have another fundraiser in April. So we were very, very happy to have them back. We also, our December calendar was so full with all the holiday events and holiday parties that we were turning people away almost on a daily basis. People were constantly calling, trying to figure out how they could get an event held with us. And we did continue our community grant program. So if there's a nonprofit organization, they'd like to use our space, but the price doesn't quite work within their budget, we can offer them a grant where a portion of the rental cost is waived. Now, I wanted to go over just a few things that we want to do in 2020, and these are all the fun things. One thing we're going to do, and we've attended local events, you know, as requested, but we're going to make a bigger initiative to attend local festivals, local fairs, and any kind of events with a visitor center booth. So we'll be attending Festival Fridays. We'll, I've reached out to the Maple Syrup Festival to see if we could have a booth there. So if there's any kind of event where our presence can be helpful and we can kind of add an impact to that, definitely reach out to us. So as we started thinking about, okay, we're going to do a visitor center booth, I thought we couldn't just lay out the chores on the table, we had to have something fun. So we're working with the sign guy right now, and they're producing some Buchanan stickers for us that we're going to be able to give away to people as they stop by our booths. And we're also going to have, I'm handing these out, y'all can play with them. We have these really fun viewfinders.
Oh, I would just see that. House and down. We have four total.
I'm giving mine. I'm on the board.
See, we love these. We ordered them. This isn't an original idea by any means. We've attended conferences, and this has been an idea from a lot of different, outside, out of West Virginia, just a really simple way to get people engaged and to see these images and just get them attracted to your location. So we've seen this from other places, and I've always thought, oh, we should do it, we should do it, but we just never quite moved forward. But we finally did.
Did you get your job to attract?
But we got them last week. I took them yesterday to Tourism Day in Charleston, and people were just thrilled with it. It was really, really affordable, and I had a guy who came over from another CBB, and he said he spent $5,000 for virtual reality goggles. And I said, we spent 150. So he was kind of kicking himself, for sure, because he said he didn't even get the type of feedback that we saw yesterday.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
So he had these when I was a kid.
Yeah. So we're going to have those at our visitor center booths, and we can get new reels, and it's really easy to pop them out and everything. Stick them in, whatever. Yeah, sure.
I thought you were giving them.
No, people tried to walk off of them yesterday. So we're going to have these, we're going to have the Buchanan stickers, and then of course just our local literature. So I'm excited for that. I think it'll be a lot of fun. It's always fun just to chit chat. I'll pass things around so people can play with them. We're also, in this new year, we, we used to do an advertising grant program, and whenever we took on the event center, it just ruined that operation into our budget. That was something we had to cut out. But I think we're at a point where we really want to show more support for local tourism businesses. So what we're doing is pulling some money out of our savings account, total of $10,000, to open that up for local tourism businesses to apply for an advertising grant with us. They can receive up to $1,000. So we're hoping to really support our small businesses and encourage them to see the benefit of advertising, whether it's producing a rack card, if it's doing a social media advertising campaign, if it's doing a print article, anything they're interested in doing, we're willing to work with them. So I'm excited for that, too. It's always fun to get some different ideas of what community groups will do.
That's a nice shot of our courthouse.
Yeah. Might be a Robbie Skinner photo.
Probably.
And then the last thing we really want to do in this upcoming year is to support the arts in Buchanan, and we're going to work towards finding, securing a location and an artist to do an interactive mural. So if you see like the angel wings where people are posing, and it encourages them to take their photo and post it on social media, that's something that we want to sponsor this year. So I was going to throw out Art 26201, but I haven't contacted them directly, but I plan to work with them closely and get something up and running. Yeah.
I noticed that the Division of Tourism has actually started that at some of the more popular state parks. At Babcock State Park in Beatty County, they literally have a sign that says, "Post Your Memory Here."
Yeah.
And it has the hashtags that they want you to use so that it gets, you know, seen the most.
They have a really cool system to capture all of that, so as soon as somebody posts it, they have a media team that can immediately acquire that information that's related. Yeah.
Laura, there is a lot of local artists that I feel could do this, so I'd like to see a local person do this.
Yeah, that would be great. And if anybody knows somebody who's interested, I mean, this is just solely an idea. We haven't really made that next step, but I definitely want to make it an intention to have it done in 2020. So yeah, I would be all ears for that.
Now, is it something unique for them to donate their time and do it themselves, or is it a payment thing?
I think it really depends on what the budget is. So maybe we can, we can provide materials if they donate time, or it just really depends on what the final design is. I'm really open to all suggestions. I want to do something different than the angel wings. Everybody's doing that. We need to do something, Amy.
Pete, you talked about flipping the event center between events. So where do you get the staff for that? How many people?
Oh, it's a struggle. So Sean is our sole full-time employee for the event center. Now, I have nothing to do, honestly, with the event center. It's Sean that's out there, and he's the working hand. So Sean is our sole full-time employee. We do have three to four part-time staff people, and it's a rotating position, just because there's no guaranteed hours, it's part-time, and it's really cruddy hours, honestly. We do have a contract, or not a contract, but a standing agreement with a cleaning company who comes in, they clean the facility after each event, and they also help us with the labor of just, you know, handling tables and chairs. So that's a help. But it's always a struggle, and I think we've just kind of accepted the fact that that's just the deal. We're not going to find a solid working staff for that at this point, unless we continue to grow, and we can do that, does guaranteed hours. Yeah.
And they also rescue wedding cakes.
Yeah. Yeah, you've seen that most recent article that My Buchanan did. We, we worked with them to do an article about the event center and all the crazy stuff that happens behind the scenes that people don't necessarily see, and how you just have to be able to adapt and adjust to that. Any other questions?
Other questions, Laura? Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Larry Dean is asked to address the council. Mr. Dean, is this a sewer matter?
Yes, sir.
We took it up at the sanitary board meeting at 4:00 today, and we just received your invoice on that pump failure, I think just this morning, if I'm correct.
Yeah, I came in and gave it to Mrs. Jenkins.
Yeah, it wasn't on, it wasn't submitted in time for us to take action on it, because we got to have our agenda out three days before the meeting. But we're putting it on the agenda for the next meeting, sanitary board, and we'll take it up then. So sanitary board will take it up. I think that's February 20th, I want to say. But we'll, we'll work with you to make it right by you. All right? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wanted to address the council that didn't sign in? If not, we're going to get into our department and board reports. First up is our information coordinator and grant writer researcher, Callie Crumman. Sam, Callie, how's it going?
Great, thank you. Just go over our website and social media for the past couple of weeks. In your report, it's pretty much the norm on the website as far as the amount of traffic. We had a lot of hits on our social media for the fire chief's funeral, a profession under the cross ladders, as well as for Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and shared a photo of our law enforcement officers. And we had some other notices went out and shared, encouraging everyone to participate in the upcoming Community Spelling Bee as well. I presented at the Buchanan Rotary, both on the city and also our Volunteer Center this week. And then on Monday, I attended in Bridgeport at the Conference Center, the Opportunity Zone Summit, all about the opportunity zones. We are, the city is within two census tracts that have been designated as opportunity zones, and that's a financial mechanism to try to encourage investment within those zones. And so I went to see what I could learn about that. It's not grant opportunities. It's a little different where investors and these funds that they might create would not have to pay capital gains on the investments they make within the opportunity zones. So there was, Kathy McCary was there as well, and we learned a little bit about that, to try to see what it could do for the community. And then getting down into our active grants, the Volunteer Center, just working on some reporting for that, and as well as we have on the day after an ML day, so on Tuesday, we're going to be doing with the after-school kids at Stocker, an activity with service activity. And Gabby's also been working with the high school, and she's continued to work on one-on-one. She had someone come in from Mountain Hospice today, so she continues to help folks and organizations get onto the Volunteer Center, see how it works, and see how they can add their agency if they would like to. Let's see. We had some, just kind of reporting, and I had to actually take a test for the physical activity transportation hub path project that we're working on to do those routes throughout town for physical activity through WBU. And let's see, some reporting for reef as well and our recycling bid. And moving down on passing on along some information, there were a couple we were waiting for with the police department, was looking at the cops hiring and mini-grant for doing some community policing, looking to that for maybe the junior VIPS program. That's the bulk of the past couple of weeks what I've been working on, still waiting on the safe routes to parks, and of course, the AML pilot as well, and the Transportation Alternatives program that we submitted last spring, early spring as well. And when I was at Rotary, I did just kind of give an overview for the entire year, and we came in, total for 2019 of grants that we've worked on, 242,108, 2018 was 295, so kind of in the same range, and of course, we're still waiting to hear on a couple as well. I think that's most of what I have for today, kind of short and sweet. We do want to encourage, the Volunteer Center wanted to encourage folks to, if they have the day off on Monday, make it a day on instead of a day off, as the ML data serve's saying that they're using. So consider going to our Volunteer Center, it's buchananwb.org/volunteer, and you can look for opportunities to get involved in the community. Oh, and the transfer station will be closed for maintenance. I'm sure Jerry's probably going to mention that too, but on Monday and Tuesday. So something to keep in mind.
Callie has gingerly reached out to her former colleagues with the EP about the AML grant, and they just continue to tell us it's, the governor's got it.
Yeah, that's been the case for their hands.
We're just, we're waiting like all the other communities that submitted applications. We'll try to be patient. Questions for Callie?
I was a guest at the Rotary Club dinner or luncheon, and you did a great job. It was proud to be able to see you put on your presentation, representative of the city well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You wouldn't expect anything like that.
It's easy when you have so many groups and entities and people in the community working on projects, there's a lot of good things to talk about. So thank you.
Thanks, Callie.
Thank you.
Willow Meister awaits mommy.
Yes.
Okay. Next up would be Deborah Brockman. Deborah couldn't be with us, but she sent her report, and it'll just take me about two minutes to read through it. It's dated today, January 16. Programming update, basketball games started last Saturday. They're playing in two different locations due to gym time. Second and third graders are at Stocker, fourth and fifth. Little buddies, middle and high school leagues are at the high school. After-school and tutoring is going very well, approximately 58 in daily attendance, and they're accepting applications for tutoring as they have recruited volunteers for the program. The building continues to be busy. They have birthday parties every weekend and meetings several evenings each week. The PALS program is getting bigger on a weekly basis as well. Building repairs, they had several repairs done on the furnaces in the past month. It was found that two of the four units had not been working, therefore half of the building was cold. Now they're all up and running. Also, we have been having issues with the fire alarm going off randomly. We're having it looked at by Kritz Electric in the next few days, and we'll decide if it's repairable or obsolete. The system was installed in 2003. And the youth involvement hours, remember we had some curtailed time in December with the holidays, was 9,745 youth hours. We average between 12,000 and 13,000 hours a month. So there you have Deborah's report. Next up would be our Public Works Director, Mr. Jerry Arnold. Jerry, how's it going?
Good, good evening. How are you all?
Very short, very short report tonight. I'll say, not in my case, but when it says nothing new to report, that doesn't mean that the department's set on their hands, that we're just on the same project we reported on last council meeting. So water's working on abandoning the line on Short Alley. The sewer crew, Crew 1's continuing to work on the CJ Martin Line Extension, but they're having some issues because of the wet conditions. Crew 2's been working in the basement of the theater. They actually completed the installation of the sanitary sewer in the basement level of the theater. And the maintenance crew and plant crew are both routine maintenance. that the department's set on their hands, that we're just on the same project we reported on last council meeting. So water's working on abandoning the line on Short Alley. The sewer crew, Crew 1's continuing to work on the CJ Martin Line Extension, but they're having some issues because of the wet conditions. Crew 2's been working in the basement of the theater. They actually completed the installation of the sanitary sewer in the basement level of the theater. And the maintenance crew and plant crew are both routine maintenance. Street department, we continue to work in the theater and on sidewalk construction as well as permits. And engineering, Jay's working on the same projects I reported on at the last meeting. As Callie said, the transfer station will be closed Monday and, or Monday and Tuesday for the replacement of the truck scales. Will be back open at 7:30 on Wednesday. That's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Questions for Jerry? Tell all the guys we appreciate your work.
We'll make it. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next up is our director of finance administration, Amby Jenkins.
Hey, thank you. Hey, I'm going to give you your, this is the meeting in which I give you your balances for your enterprise funds because I gave the balances to general funding, anything associated with general funding last meeting. So balances, December 31st, and the water board checking was $264,820. There's $10,812 remaining in the ACP funds. The water CDs and savings, $958,800. In waste collection board checking, $709,125 and they have a CD at $57,546. The sanitary board checkings, $671,836 and they have CDs at $314,100. The bills in your packet are routine except for, we had Cleveland Brothers, a boom truck, boom lift for $2,190 expense. Our CPA closed our books in the general fund share, that was $4,590. Target Solutions for Fire Training Library was $3,000. We expensed to the airport, their second half of the budget that you had approved back last March, $7,500. Country Road Transit, $5,000. The Health Department, $2,500. And we should have expensed for economic development, but she missed that invoice, so we'll pay it at the next round. And that's at $15,000. Casey Earls for Stocker Youth Center Basketball Church, $2,430. And, okay, so we're beginning to be pretty active at beginning our budgets for the general fund. General funds budget, budgets are due before the enterprise fund budget. So street, police, fire and Stocker department heads have been sent information to draft their requests for their budgets for the 2020-21 budget year. Their attorneys request back in to me by January 30th and then we're going to start setting up the working sessions, which we already have one scheduled for February the 25th. It's a working session, which council will be here and will have some presentations from the supervisors or head, department heads on what they are requesting. The general fund and coal tax budgets must be completed and submitted to the state auditor's office for approval by March the 27th. We have to also publish that as a Class 2 legal advertisement. Council is also required by code to meet between March 7th and the 28th. So your last regular session of council is March the 19th. So ideally, we hope to have that budget approved on March 19th, sent for publication, then approved by the state auditor's office, and then the council will lay the levy by code on Tuesday, the third Tuesday in April, which is the 21st. So just kind of, I'll keep telling you this over and over, you remember from last year, I won't let you forget. We, just as an update, the ZACPOST wagon rides in December received $890 in donations and those proceeds were split 50/50 between the Upsher County Parish House and the Salvation Army. And I delivered those checks today for $445 apiece and they were very happy with them. Candidate filing for the municipal election started Monday and filing persons have filed so far. For the office of mayor, we have Dave McCauley and Mike Fodner. For the office of recorder, we have Randy Sanders. For the office of council, CJ Rylands, Pamela Perry-Buffloo, Sheila Sines, Matt Curraner, Shawna Jones, Jack L. Rigger and Steve Olddaker. Filing for this, these offices will continue until noon on Saturday. If you're filing in person, the office will be open until noon on Saturday, January 25th, or you have to have your application postmarked by the 25th. The other thing I wanted to report to you, last meeting, council had tasked a committee to research and come back with a recommendation for possible pay increases for future councils' salaries. And we've talked separately, myself, councilwoman Albaugh, councilwoman Thomas, and we believe this task should be undertaken later and perhaps in a different form. Council may want to discuss a system in which the citizens are going to participate in this recommendation or maybe some sort of automated process. So at this time, we'd cancel our meetings and we're kind of going to leave it at that. I don't know if council Albaugh or council Thomas want to add to that, but that's my report.
I wasn't here at that meeting when that committee was made, but I did read in the local newspaper that I was appointed to a committee. And then my phone wouldn't work for 10 days. So finally, I came in and saw Amby and I says, "I'm not really happy about giving my fellow council members a raise." That didn't sound right. So we, and she'd already done some homework and David had to do, so I didn't, I wasn't for it. And we got, we can find a better way to do that. Thanks.
What else, Amby? Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any other questions for any?
I just want to add a few things. I had some conversations with Amby and also with Mary that the timing, one of the real issues you have with looking at the potential increases for the mayor and for the recorder and for council members is it's not good to have elected officials determine what their future compensation is going to be. And the process, there's many things I believe that's wrong with the current process that we have and also a tremendous discrepancy with what we pay, for example, a board member versus a person that's on the city council that's a board member in addition to a council member. And the discrepancy in regard to the compensation level is just, it's unimaginable. But, you know, CJ made a very, I think, interesting comment last council meeting. Most people that run for positions like we're sitting here today don't do it for the level of compensation. They want to do something for the community. But if you're going to, if you're going to do that, then we should have a system that's going to recognize and be fair and have a level playing field. And I think at some point in time, we need to address this and especially not in a year of an election, because most people don't really understand, I believe the majority of people don't understand what the system is and we need to take a serious look at that. So I'm glad we're not going to have a committee meeting and discuss this. I'm geared another two and a half years and I think that's one of the things I would like to see accomplished in this system and how we do things. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thanks, Amby.
Matt Gregory is out of town, but his able lieutenant, Doug Loudon, is here to edify the masses.
Have you faced any porters of crime?
Something like that.
Now, you said that.
It's supposed to be taken around town.
So basically, I only have three things to record on tonight, which everybody will feel blessed about that. The volunteers and police service is currently planning a recruitment drive to bolster their ranks throughout the winter leading into spring. Our corporals and sergeants will be undergoing supervisory training, Harrison Finley at the end of January. And then Officer Coe, our newest officer in our ranks, will be finishing his field training on January 25th. This is a 12-week training program that we put our officers through and are newly hired. He will now be assigned to a shift where he can work on his assignment.
Would you tell the chief that you went ahead and did the 2019 year-end reports in February?
Went through the whole thing, right?
I'm just kidding. I look forward to that report every year.
Every year.
It's an amazing thing. So any questions for Doug before we let him hightail it out of here? Thanks, Doug. Tell the guys and our gala, I'll be soon.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Okay. Next up is our excellent city attorney, Tom O'Neil.
Thank you.
How are things?
Mr. Mayor of Charleston, you doing okay down there? You keeping them in order there as well as? As best as I can. Most of what I have to report or to deal with tonight with you is covered under strategic and the number of items and correspondence as well that we can discuss as we get to those matters. But I'd like to bring your attention, one kind of break item of breaking news, I suppose, that is relevant to the city. As we've discussed in previous meetings, there has been a lawsuit that was brought by an individual in Kenone County against the city of Charleston relative to their municipal sales tax, challenging the constitutionality of the home rule provision by which the city of Charleston implemented that tax. This afternoon, that lawsuit was brought by Circuit Court of Kenone County. This afternoon, Judge King in Kenone County handed down his decision on the city of Charleston's motion to dismiss that case, which Judge granted. So it's really good news from the perspective of municipalities around the state that have used home rule to implement this revenue tax procedure. Of course, the plaintiff in that case has 30 days to appeal Judge King's ruling to state Supreme Court. We don't know whether he'll avail himself of that opportunity or not, but we'll keep you posted and be back up here later for a number of other things we see, but I'm happy to take any questions and discuss any other issues.
The municipal, they filed an amicus writ, I believe, in that.
And I haven't had the opportunity. Andy Ford, the, I had to read it. It was a motion to dismiss of the grant, so that's.
They do have time to appeal, so we'll see how that goes. Thanks, Tom. We'll bring you back here very shortly. Correspondence and information, you get all kinds of stuff in your pocket. The state auditor's 2020 budget preparation regional workshop scheduled. There's a FOIA request from Smart Procure soliciting purchasing order and vendor information. There's the city of Buckannon latest FOIA request to the Hottsville and Tenderton Public Service Districts. There's a thank you letter to Tim Critchfield for his latest gift to the Stocker Capital Campaign. A thank you letter to Warehouser for their latest gift to the Capital Campaign. There's a letter from Sutton Lake Altice regarding changes to video rigs. The city does not control what the cable company charges for any of their services. There's an email from West Virginia DOH regarding the 33 West traffic study, which we think will be made available in February at some point. There was a question posed at the last meeting about that. There's the city attorney's comments before the Upsher County Commission's public hearing of January 6, 2020. Actually, I think that hearing was held on the 9th, but Tom's comments are dated on the 6th. And then seeing Go Bang Doing Businesses Corrupt Refractories has a notice of planned layoff. These are not permanent layoffs, as I understand it, they can be temporary, but temporary is indeterminate at this juncture. Mark, you didn't want to probably say anything about that. I saw you back there.
I'd be happy to answer questions, but I don't have any prepared statement.
Yeah, it's, well, hopefully it'll be a shorter period of time than a longer one. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay. Consent agenda consists of three items that I'd ask the council's motion on. The approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on January 2, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of our general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. May I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign the minutes. Takes us down to strategic issues for discussion and for vote. The first matter as we bring the city attorney back up, Tom O'Neil, would be the approval on second and final reading of ordinance 440 having to do with the city reporter's salary. Tom, you're back up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read the ordinance by caption. I'll be right back to answering your questions. Ordinance number 440 of the city of Buckannon and ordinance modifying a compensation paid to the city recorder or acting the city recorder for performing those duties related to his or her office and setting an effective date for set increase is the second two readings.
Yes, we entertained this and approved it on first reading on January 2. Council, this will be the second and final reading. If adopted by you, it will go into effect February 15th, but the increased salary would not become effective until following the certification of the election by the Upsher County Commission at some point during the tail end of May. I would entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. May I have a second to his motion? I have a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign the minutes will reflect that Mr. Sanders has abstained. Next up is F2, the approval ordinance 441 prohibiting the award of living animals as prizes. To remind the council, council gave direction to the city attorney a couple of meetings ago to draft this ordinance, following a recommendation from the Animal Care and Control Commission to contrive the ordinance. I would tell you that Animal Care and Control Commission met earlier this week, on Monday evening, and approved the language that you're about to consider on the first of two readings with ordinance 441. Mr. O'Neil, you have your.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 441 of the city of Buckannon and ordinance prohibiting the offering or acceptance of live animals as prizes or inducements in carnival games operating within the corporate limits of the city and setting an effective date is the first two readings.
Essentially, and I've had conversations, plural, with Shane Turner with Gamble Amusements and we certainly support all things Strawberry Festival and all things that Gamble Amusements and the Turner family brings to make our festival a success every year. But there was an increased number of observed incidents involving kids who had won a goldfish or a little turtle or other animals. I think there might even have been some parakeets involved. And some of these animals were mistreated, some were killed in the parking lots as the kids were winning these prizes. Additionally, there was, one of the gifts was various iguanas, some of which we believe might have been released down by the river, others of which, there's just, it's not a good situation. So the Animal Care and Control Commission made a recommendation to the council, which the council then directed Mr. O'Neil to prepare this ordinance. I think it's the right thing to do. I'm not just concerned about doggies and kitty catch, right?
I want to just note that this, this ordinance is modeled on ordinances that have been implemented by municipalities across the country. I borrowed, I don't remember which municipality, say Texas, most heavily borrowed from, but there's kind of elements from four or five different municipalities around the country that deal with this, including the exemptions for 4H and FFA.
Sure.
So this is, this is tested, this is tested on which has been implemented elsewhere in the country.
That's true. I'd entertain a motion that we approve this on the first of two readings. I think I heard Pam Buckle first and Mr. Sanders seconding her motion.
Sounds fair.
Does that sound about right? Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question as we move to approve this on the first of two readings. All those in favor of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign the minutes will reflect that the first reading passed unanimously. Which takes us to our next ordinance, also having to do with Animal Care and Control Commission, ordinance 442. Mr. O'Neil, it's an act you do again.
Getting the hang of this. Ordinance number 442 of the city of Buckannon, amending, modifying and reenacting ordinance numbers 300, 397 and 412 of the city of Buckannon, known, cited and referred to as the Buckannon Animal Care and Control Ordinance. This makes some minor modifications to the membership of the Animal Care and Control Commission, particularly it removes the designation for a veterinarian in Upsher County to be a named designated member of the board and substitutes that for another at-large member.
And in fact, of the at-large members, two of the three at-large members could be county residents.
That's right. At least one has to be a resident of the city to maintain a city resident majority of the voting membership. of the voting membership board between the mayor and the other member.
Yeah. So it's exactly what the Animal Care and Control Commission had requested. That body only meets quarterly unless there are special circumstances arising and you need to have a special meeting. But I think that group knows how it works best. And Tanya Pickens is available to help us. She's the resident veterinarian member right now, but she, in a couple of years, has not been able to attend a single meeting. But she does other things for the commission. So it's my recommendation that we consider this on the first of two readings. I would entertain a motion that we approve this on first reading.
So moved.
I think I heard Mr. Sanders first and Mr. Skinner second. But it was close. You want to do it again? You armor up?
No, I'll go along with that.
So Sanders, Sanders the motion and Skinner is second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Next area of conversation would be the retirement of the municipal public safety complex fee. So F4, F5, F6 kind of all basically run together. 20-ish years ago, is it about that, Ambi? We embarked on a bold step as a city to acquire, it was probably more like 15 years ago, the Old Foodland, which some folks thought we were crazy that you could never take an old supermarket and turn it into a public safety complex. Well, guess what? We've got the best public safety complex in all of West Virginia and an Old Foodland supermarket. So we didn't have the money to purchase the property. The property was appraised for $2.5 million. We made an offer to the bank that had foreclosed upon the property for $600,000, and they came back and said, no, we reject your offer, but we would take $607,500. So Nancy and I passed the hat and raised the other 7,500 bucks, basically, and that's how, that's how we ended up with a supermarket. But that wasn't going to get us beyond the supermarket into ready to put a fire department and ultimately our police department there. That took about another, better part of $2 million bucks to realize that. And over the past 15 years, the citizens of our community have largely paid the freight to make those bond payments. And as of the end of March, we will have paid off our bonds and the fee is scheduled to be sunset. That is, it'll go away automatically unless this council were to renew the fee. When I did the State of the City address just two weeks ago, I threw a teaser to council that instead of retiring the debt in full, that we should give some thought to establishing some financing for the maintenance of both our public safety complex and the Stockard Youth and Community Center. Further conversation with Ambi has revealed something important. The amount of $3 a month that we had been realizing over the past 15 years from our citizens had not been enough to completely pay the bonds. There's another roughly $40,000, $45,000 a year that we had been paying, allocating out of the general fund to make up for the difference to pay those bonds off. So the bottom line is, when we make that final bond payment about the end of February 1st of March, the general fund not only will be absolved of that debt to the bond element, but that other $40,000, $45,000 bucks a year that the general fund had also been advancing will come back to the general fund. So recognizing that, I think we should, my recommendation to the council is that we retire the public safety complex bonds in their entirety and that we not renew any part of that indebtedness toward any maintenance fee, but that as part of the upcoming budgetary process, we look close at those line items for repairs and maintenance to the public safety complex and to the Stockard Youth and Community Center. Does that make sense to the council?
Well, I think, yeah, yes, it does. But I think we also have to take a look at, you know, we have a sales tax that has been implemented effective January 1, and we need to take a look at our finances over the next 12 months to see what the impacts are going to be everywhere. So I think you're correct, David. It's a sunset fee, so let it be sunset and we'll move it forward and then take a look at the sales tax impact for our future.
So let's take these up one at a time then, since they're all agenda items. F4, read Retirement of Municipal Public Safety Complex Fee. The ordinance retires all obligations as of March 31 of 2020. Since there was opportunity for us to renew a fee, our recommendation is to not renew the fee, to let that fee mechanism die as of March 31, 2020. I would entertain a motion that we allow the public safety complex fee to be retired effective March 31, 2020. A motion by Mr. Rylands and a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F5 was discussion, possible action concerning a public safety complex maintenance fee. For the reasons that we have just earlier discussed, my recommendation is to the council that we do not establish that fee, that we truly do give back to our citizens the full $3 a month retiring that debt. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, may I have a second to his motion? Mr. Sanders has seconded your motion. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F6, similarly, we had put down on the agenda possible action for a maintenance fee for the Stockard Youth and Community Center. For the reasons that we've already discussed, my recommendation to the council is that we do not implement that fee. I have a motion to that. I have a motion by Thomas, a second by Skinner. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Takes us down to F7. We're going to call Ambi back up to discuss this. We won't receive our first quarterly installment of our new sales tax until end of April 1st to May for the state of West Virginia. It takes about a month after the quarter concludes for the state to send its collections to the city. It's necessary in anticipation of the implementation of that ordinance to establish a repository here in town to take those new fees once they start to be received in the next few months. Ambi has checked with every single lending institution in the city limits, and you have something to report and a recommendation to make to the council.
Counsel, I checked with F5, thanks in county. I might note that the city has relations with, or accounts or leases with four of the banks in town and one of them we didn't. So I got the rates back from the banks and actually the one that's coming up with the better rates, and this is an interest-bearing money market account. And I think we should probably set it as a money market account in the beginning until it's built up to possibly, council may want to put some of that in CDs. But for now, we're going to have to have a somewhat liquid account that we can take in and move out until we can determine how these funds are going to be spent and how often. So actually, the one that came up with the better rates was Premier Bank. Some of them have tiered, some of them have 25% of the prime, and they were running from .10%, .3%, and I kind of used $100,000 as a threshold to kind of judge it by. So .20%, .40% is actually what Premier had. The others were .25, .20, .10, 1.8, not 1.8, .18.
I was going to say.
I tried to talk one up and then do that, but you know, we'll get some decent, I think, CD rates once we have enough money built up. That is actually the bank we don't have anything with right now. And I'm sure counsel agrees with me. We don't want to go out of town. These banks pay the NO, they support our community in different ways, and we want to stay in town with these funds.
Hey, that's the best deal.
If something would happen to come up between now and the time that we, you know, because we've got to open this up, like he said, April, May, but I wanted to be prepared for this. I didn't want to just pick a bank and then come in and tell you about it, and I want you to be caught for it, please.
You've heard our Director of Finance and Administration's recommendation that we establish the sales tax checking account with Premier Bank of Buchanan. I'd entertain a motion that we approve that recommendation. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh and a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Comments and announcements, my gosh, we're going to do the record question. I'll do, I can say our favorite poem or something like that. If you guys aren't earning your money tonight. I'm going to take a quick.
This is Albaugh. What do you have?
The mayor's the smartest.
Did he say mayor or mare?
I think he said.
Mary.
What do you have, Boris?
I don't have anything other than it's good to be well. A lot of people have been sick.
That's the truth.
It really, it really has. A lot of us, people out there, and I just hope everybody gets well quicker. And it snows again because it kills all those cooties and germs. All those cooties and germs. Anyway, it's going to be back in the, back to work.
We missed you at the first meeting, so happy to be here today.
Thank you.
Pam Buckle.
Just glad we all agreed about the ordinance against the animals being given out at the carnivals, because I can see it escalating that probably next year, they may be handing out pet snakes. It could escalate, and then the puppies and then the kittens, and I'm just glad that we all voted for that one.
That's right.
Yep.
What else, Pam?
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Rylands.
I'm good.
Wow. Mr. Skinner.
I'd just like to say, I noticed that we have several candidates in the room tonight, and you know, this is an important time for our community, and I wish everybody much success regardless of political affiliation. Of course, I've been asked that several times. We do run nonpartisan, so that, just keep that, you know, make sure that we are for our community. When we run for office, talking about pay, we do this for the love of our community. And I wish everybody much success. I hope it is a very clean campaign. This is a small town. I believe wholeheartedly that this is a family, and you know, I would like to see this be as cordial and respectful as it possibly can be regardless of office, all the way from the local level to, you know, up to our state and regional elected officials. So with that, I just would like to hope that, you know, everybody can sleep well at night and not be up worried about, you know, what's, what's on social media and what people are saying. And if you have a question about a candidate, ask the candidate. Let's get to know everybody and not just rely on what we see or what we hear in shops and restaurants and businesses. I had a great conversation today with a lady, you know, who was, you know, who had heard several different things, and we had a great two-hour face-to-face conversation that was meaningful for myself and meaningful for her. So I just, that's my hope, that's my prayer for this, for this next few months. So good luck, and I just hope that we can all shake hands at the end of this and remain committed to the future of our community.
And I will say that Mary's not even a citizen of the city, so two hours per vote, that's a lot of hours.
Can I add one thing also? I'm also getting, still yet getting questions, this is an at-large vote.
Correct.
For people, and people are still thinking that they, it's wards and.
We abolished those in 1984.
Yes, that's why I told you. They're still asking.
All of us sitting up here are elected by everyone that lives in this community, whether you live on Roar Avenue or Cleveland Avenue, we represent the entire community, so.
You do have to live in the city limits.
Yeah, you guys live in.
Mr. Jay David Thomas.
I want to remind everybody, there's a spelling bee a week from tomorrow at the Conference Center, and it's for the arts within the community, and we'd love to see people there. It's not too late to sign up if you want to. It's $100 per table, and it's a, it's a fun event.
Is that arts line?
Yes. Arts line.
Okay, okay, all right, that's good. We're going to have a team.
We're going to have a fire department, a police department. There'll be a lot of different tables. It's a fun thing. Also, I'm going to just, for information, yesterday, the House sent articles of impeachment to the Senate, and today, the Dow Jones and Astac and the S&amp;P all set records, all-time records. So maybe we need to impeach the president once in a while.
That's a joke. Thank you for that humor. I thought that impeachment thing could go a different direction there for a while.
They do that with mayor.
It's been said.
All the smart ass do that.
Mr. Randall Sanders, sometime, I know Sandy Randers.
Yes, sir. What's your name? Exciting time. I'm glad to see a nice turnout for the meeting tonight. Glad to see the candidates here and look forward to seeing them on the campaign trail. And you know, reflecting back on the board meetings that I get to attend, it'd be great for us to turn out more often for those as well. Those are public meetings. We have a lot of citizens that interact in those meetings and bring a lot of good information to the, to the city, to the, just like these ordinances that we passed tonight concerning the animals and so forth, that was resolved by our Animal Care and Control Board. So just a lot of great ideas out there. So the citizens are very active in the community. I'm really proud to be a part of that, and I just wish everyone well.
No long-winded speeches tonight. I do want to be candid with the residents of Buchanan about our collective profound disappointment in the Upshur County Commission's position taken during last Thursday's public hearing. It completely ignores the realities as to who provides the utilities here in Buchanan. We have the singular water plant, we have the singular sewer plant, we have hundreds of miles of utility lines that stretch throughout not just the corporate limits, but throughout a good part of Upshur County. We are very confident in going forward as this matter will now advance to the West Virginia Public Service Commission, that the city's position will prevail and that our utility territories to the west of its corporate limits along Route 33 will be vindicated and will remain in the city's. The sanitary board earlier today decided because of the lack of a memorandum of understanding being forthcoming from the developers on Route 33 to suspend and revoke the outstanding memorandum of understanding until such time as the developers come back to the table and want to be serious about developing utilities on the south side. The sanitary board is expediting all permitting and everything else that's required administratively to start construction of the north side sanitary sewer utility lines, hopefully by the end of February 1st of March. So we're expediting that project, but the utilities on the south side are sort of in a suspension mode until such time as we get people to the table to discuss how they're going to participate in the financing of that project. So that's all I have. I would entertain at 8:10 PM, we adjourn. A motion by Albaugh and a second by Ryland, we're out of here, folks.